All right, welcome everybody to the Select Board Meeting of July 1st. Six thirty is when we are getting started and we'll do that as per rule with the legislative meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like the flags are to talk to it.
All right. And so with that, we'll move on to the roll call. So Dave Hemmway, Chair of the Select Board.
Marlo Harris, Norma Leiblake.
And our meeting rules and procedures, I don't think we need to worry about it, but we're stating them each time now, so we're trying to run it like a classroom. Please just don't speak over people and raise your hand and we'll get to you. For announcements, I will state that there's a pretty amazing one that I think I'm gonna let our administrators mention about our clerk and the amazing job that has happened there. And I'll continue.
Well, yes, it's, our clerk, town clerks have really worked very hard to contact every dog owner that hadn't registered, licensed their dog. And for the first time, we have no warrant that we need to send to the police to arrest these wayward dogs.
Oh, good.
And I know the police are quite disappointed, but I do know Mary and Stephanie have put quite a lot of effort into that. So that's, that was really, I commend them for that. And I have a letter that, I don't know if you've seen it, but I'm gonna ask you to sign. I think it's kinda nice.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much to our clerks for that. Moving along on the announcements, I had one and then I'm just gonna cover it in the project status, because we haven't done that in a while. So I'm gonna run down the list. Sorry, I'm not displaying it. It is available on our website. So closed moon bridge, a lot of people have started asking questions about it again. Construction will start likely delayed into 2025. This is due to right-of-way negotiations and issues with those and easements for them. The final right-of-way easement should be getting taken care of now, so we can finally, once that's done, go out to bid for construction. So hopefully that happens and we can get started in 2025 with construction. The sand shed stuff is in progress. Access completion is, of course, still anticipated this year. The pad and building planning and then the old location cleanup and transfer of that is something that we are working on, putting together some committees to talk about, which I believe we'll be discussing this evening. The town hall, of course, has ongoing stuff all the time. We've gotten the drainage outside, the interior paint, the retaining wall outside, and all of the key fobs downstairs completed. There should be key fobs up here shortly as well. Upcoming is going to be the heating system that had been failing. We're actually discussing that a bit tonight, I believe. And then the clapboards and external paint and then the back hall door stairs and also the ADA railings are things that are upcoming for town hall improvements or fixes. For town property sales, many have been completed and are back on the tax list. We've worked through those quite well. Those are ongoing as ready. We expect there will be a public hearing on the next ones at our next meeting in two weeks. And that is for the section that has previously been discussed a couple times in Pillsbury Lake.
Dave, if I could interrupt you for a minute?
Yes.
That public hearing is required because normally the policy in Pillsbury Lake, we offer the property to the abudders. In this case, the abudders haven't shown interest and you're doing it so that you can sell it because...
They haven't noticed it at all. Well, no. We had decided at the last one that since we weren't, we may not follow the policy that we were going to...
That's where I was going. I just wanted to point that out. I didn't do it very well, but that's what I was trying to do.
So not necessarily a required public hearing, but we wanted to do that and make sure that everybody gets a chance for their input. Deer Meadow Solar is ongoing and still delayed. Olive Wood did extend, use their extension clause and exercise it. Expected completion is still one to two years after approval. And we should receive further engineering once the interconnection is finally finalized. They thought it was going to be finalized and was about done and ready to get moving. And then the Twin States Project canceled, which had changed their stuff previously, and now it's possibly changing back. So we're still waiting to see where that goes. They are, still have intent and still want to do the project, but it's been very frustratingly delayed, both for them and for us. Digital records are in progress. Land Use Department has been completed for those records for quite a while now and has been getting used. And other departments are to be added very shortly, hopefully.
Depends on which department.
Yes, that will be discussions with the departments. The digital sign is completed. You've been seeing it out in front of the safety building. Installation and operational testing is complete. It's got stuff displayed on it, content and policies and how we manage that and work with it is something that we should be discussing tonight. Community Power is operational and that is awesome and we can continue to save money. Something that is exciting, they were just a press release this morning for it. So I'm very glad to say that Webster Community Power is continuing the savings for our residents with the Granite Basic Rate for the August to January timeframe that will be eight point six cents per kilowatt versus the roughly ten point five cents per kilowatt announced for both Unitil and EverSource. This represents an eighteen percent savings to our residents. However, even those who have opted up to the Granite Plus or Clean 50 product for fifty percent renewable energy will still have a rate of only ten cents per kilowatt, mainly the savings versus the utility default service while having a much higher renewable content. Moving on, we also have the website, which is in progress and hopefully will have a plan to be completed sometime next year. And that is in the discussion and estimate process that's been beginning. I know there have been a couple different discussions that have happened with different possible providers. And we need to make sure that we are continuing on that so that we are able to make that for next year. And finally, Transfer Station PFAS, engineering is in progress, should be mostly done. Most of the planning for that had been presented and been done for a while now. Expected completion of the project is 2026. Budgeting and how that is affected by loans, loan forgiveness, grants, et cetera, we should have more of that information by the end of August. So at the end of August, we'll be starting to work that in and see how that's going to affect our budgeting, our planning and moving forward. That covers my announcements on the project status. Were there any other announcements to be made?
I just have a small announcement. Fourth of July is Thursday, which is, we're normally closed on Thursday anyway, so, and we will be this Thursday as well. The office will be open on the Friday following the fifth. And, cause I'm working that day and I imagine I'll have lots of time to catch up on projects. Many Fridays I'm there and don't see another human being all day, so no wonder I talk to myself. Then I stop in.
Yeah, and then Emmett stops. Well, you break the monotony, Emmett. But anyway, we will be open Friday for the administrative office.
Speaking of the Fourth of July, please celebrate responsibly and responsibly and safely and let those around you know if you, if and when you are going to do so with explosive fun, so that they don't get worried about it, whether they are pets or whether they are vets. Moving on then.
So I have an announcement for the, for the chicken dinner at the firehouse.
Thank you.
It's gonna be the twentieth of this month, four thirty to six, fifteen dollars for a half chicken meal. We have tickets here at the town hall and we have tickets, Phil has tickets at the Police Department and most of the members on the firehouse have tickets as well. So just wanted to bring that up. It's always a good, good meal. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, it's always, it's a very good meal. All right. Anything else before we move on to our appointment? All right. Welcome, Chris.
Thanks.
I know you've been chomping at the bit for, you know, getting in here. So discussion with the salt shed, sand shed, which portion of this did you want to discuss at this point?
Any, any and all. I'm not up to date on anything that has been done up there. You had mentioned some stuff that I didn't quite get. So what has been done on the site?
Okay, so what has been done and or is being done is the access to get up to the new location. And Emmett's been working on that as applicable and possible throughout other projects and weather.
Okay.
What we are needing to do is to move forward and we had tried to, what we want to see is, for example, Emmett and you working together to find a way to coordinate this. I personally see that it probably makes sense to have two different committees for two different portions of this, but I'm completely welcoming your feedback, both of yours, all of yours. And my thinking of that is that one of them will be what building and how it gets sighted and that would be mostly Emmett, Emmett contacting other road agents and possibly having them come do a meeting to figure out what are some options that would make sense and provide a recommendation. So that we have something to appropriately present to CIP, what this kind of sighting is required for that, for conservation, to be able to look at and say, that does, does not make sense, here are concerns, et cetera, which is one of the reasons why I wanna make sure that you are able to be involved with that. The other one would be the, how does what's down there already get transferred and or cleaned up to be ready for, for example, the use of more of a park area to allow more of the kayaks and canoes when they race to portage up through there more easily and or to continue the trails so that they are more continuous and contiguous. So that, I think, is more the conservation side and could be read that way or could be a separate set of things, but of course also has to include somebody like Emmett, who will be doing a lot of that transfer and movement and what is and is gonna be required for what's there. So that's kind of how I see it. I'm opening it for the discussion because we haven't really finalized any of that, just this is kind of how we're getting going and, so please.
Hey, Emmett.
Hi.
How you doing?
Depends on who you ask.
Well, I'm asking. You doing okay?
Yeah, it's all much.
So I think Emmett's role in both, in both of these areas is pretty critical. Emmett knows what has gone on down there and possibly, you know, he's told me some of the things that he knows are buried over there. You know, it's been a long, long time that stuff has been happening there. So, you know, Emmett's, Emmett's pretty critical to this whole thing. I, as far as the signing goes, you know, that is not my bailiwick and the last time I was up there, there were, there were no wetland issues, as far as I remember with regard to accessing the site and putting a building up there and the rest of that, whatever Emmett thinks is gonna be necessary for a road or paving or whatever, all, I mean, that would be his bailiwick. You're right, our concern, my concern certainly is how the site is gonna be, how the, do you intend to use that shed at all up there?
Well, until, until we get, I mean, we're gonna build a sand shed of some type. We haven't got there. Last, I took it when we had a meeting here. Marlo and I were gonna work together on, when it got that close, to put some people together and...
To do the, to work on the actual moving?
No, no, the build, the, the type of the building.
Okay, great.
She was gonna be my select person, go-to and work with me, putting a committee together or...
Sorry, I forgot that.
What's that?
Sorry, I'd forgotten that.
No, no, I, I, yeah, right? And...
That's just my fault for forgetting.
Well, you were nominated, eh?
Well, she's the right person for it.
No, no, she is. And when it all comes to it, we're gonna look at a bunch of different things, talk to some different engineers, because it's gonna be lot, you know, it's gotta be done right. It's gonna cost a lot of money to have it all contained, but you might as well do it right the first time, then you're not contaminating another area, so...
DES has all those plans for containment and everything else?
Yeah, and I, I know some people, the, the building, the person that's in charge of all the maintenance and the buildings for the state of New Hampshire, and he's got a lot of that stuff as well and, but, so that, we're gonna work on all that and we're gonna do it all right and I'm gonna be working with Marlo and when the time comes to put a plan together and to bring that back to the town spokes. Across the street, I mean, we're gonna have to use that lean-to. I mean, the chip is in there, all the signs are in there, it's padlocked.
So you're not planning to get rid of that?
No, I, I think, I think it's...
We can use it, I'm sure.
I think it's a valuable structure to the town. We just spent quite a few thousand dollars a few years ago to put a new roof on it. I mean, we might have to spend a little bit more money and board it up, put a couple of garage doors in there and store, store the boat in there in the winter from the firehouse and the sign, the speed trail of stuff that we go up in the Corps of Engineers. Phil has a relationship with them and put it in the garage, but it's always in the way and then they want it moved and, I mean, they've been great to us over the years, but clean it up and have it...
No, it's nice to know we're gonna keep it, because I'm, like I said, you can always keep it.
I mean, and then the folks from the canoe, the kayak stuff, but when you step out back of the sand shed, we don't own that land. Ten feet, you take ten feet from the back of the sand shed in on the riverside and I don't, I don't know that, they used to have a camper down in there a few years back and they used to be in there camping all the time, but I haven't seen anybody there. There's a driveway down in there. The town doesn't own that land.
The town doesn't own it?
Oh, you're talking about on the, on the, on the bridge side?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But, I mean, that, that's my thought. I mean, it's gonna be up to the town folks, the, the town fathers, the town select board to do what they wanna do, but that's what I suggest. I think it's a good place to park and recreation. I mean, if they have a mower or, I, I think it's...
It's a big asset to the town, the river and all that property.
And it's paid for.
Yeah. I agree a hundred percent.
Can I say something here?
Please.
Yeah, I, I'm disappointed with that plan, frankly. We have a lot of acreage behind the safety building for all of that equipment to move up there. And I was hoping that the board would consider, well, eventually, just eventually consider having a highway department, you know, where, where all of that stuff is lodged. I don't know what would be involved with moving, well, that, but in, in...
You, you're not gonna move that structure. It's gonna cost you more to move it than it is to build a new one. And I'm not saying it's gonna be, we're gonna get a road up there, we're gonna flatten it off, we're gonna be out of money. So then, you're gonna have to have, you're gonna have to have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe even three hundred thousand to put up a sand shed. Am I off, Marlo?
I don't think so.
I think I'm under.
Yeah, you probably are, fortunately.
And then...
Right now anyways.
And that's just the story you're saying. And then in the future, when they get their own highway department or put some money together, because you're talking a million dollars for a building, seven hundred thousand dollars for a new grader, so maybe someday that will all be gone, but I don't see it, I don't see it in the future anytime soon, not in my lifespan, that I'm gonna see a highway garage down there due to not having money to fund it. Our goal, our goal for that land was to have that. We bought enough land to add to it, but the goal at the time was to get the salt and the sand away from the river. That was step number one.
Right.
So, and that's, that's where I'm at.
Can I just add to that a little bit?
Go ahead, dear.
I think also what he's saying is, once we get all our numbers together, you present that to the town and it'll, it'll probably kill it if you do too much at once, in my mind. I think that we have to be as, I mean, we're a very tight...
Prueville.
Prueville, thank you. Prueville Town to begin with and, and, you know, and everybody's gonna have their opinion already on the whole situation. So I think what, to sell the whole moving, as you guys have all made steps, you know, I wasn't involved in some of those steps, of purchasing the land, figuring out the road, but I think if you rush any of that, cost-wise, it'll, I'm just assuming and I could be totally wrong, it just gets so killed and you gotta start over again.
And not just get killed, but it, I mean, it's...
No, you're right, a hundred percent right.
Unless you bonded that for three million dollars to put a highway garage up there and fill it full of equipment, there isn't a highway garage in a, in, in fifty mile radius around that has a full roster to even plow the snow. Over way of last winter, neighbors and people were plowing their roads for the town, cause they had no help.
So, 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 let, let me try to keep us on topic.
No, you're right. I'm just...
Because you're, I see, I see your concern and, and I agree with, there's a very different discussion that is much more dramatic if we're talking about putting in the highway department. But we're talking about leaving the land to be available to maybe someday do that, not trying to put in the highway department.
Correct.
So valid concerns, but I don't think we need to try to address them now.
Okay, so, so moving all that salt and sand, I mean, we would have to do a little bit of work with DES. One of the questions I had was, you know, do we want DES to come out and look at that site?
DES has been out, I've been turned, not, not I, but the town has been turned in a few years back because somebody didn't like what was going on over there. And the folks came out from DES and was, I think Leslie was here at the time. The paperwork must be there somewhere.
That I was not aware of.
Yeah, I heard something about that, but I don't, I don't know.
So I'd clean, this is me, I'm not the select board, remove the sand shed up there, build the sand shed, and if it's all, if it's all in place, I'm not gonna take the townsfolk's money to haul what sand and stuff we have from here up there. Fill that up up there, use this up.
Right, clean it up.
Clean it up.
Over the next winter, yeah.
Not that, I mean, it's all good work, I wouldn't mind doing it, but it, it's not practical. And clean the area up so it really looks nice. And if they come after you for something, then we deal with it.
Yeah, you know, I'm not suggesting that DES, I just wondered what the board's thinking was on it.
That's me. Back a few years ago, I wanted to buy them blocks, jersey barriers to go all the way around that so it wouldn't do anymore. And George Hasham, I don't know if George Cummins...
Yeah, that's all, that's all in the past.
Right, but I got, they said no. And I mean, I think that would've saved a lot of, but that's in the past, but I would clean it up, make it look nice, and if they come out knocking on your door, then we'll do more, other than that.
Yep, so, but there are issues there with the filled wetlands. So all that area along the right-hand side of the, of the road going in, almost all the way down to the path that comes over from the, from the elementary school, that used to be a productive wetland and it's dead now. So there's an issue there where, you know, if there's a way to, you know, do mitigation that can bring back that wetland and I would not know exactly how to do that, whether the professional would look at that and say, we, you know, it's, it's ruined, you've gotta start all over, or is there still enough there that we can work with it? So that would be an important conservation piece. Ultimately, hopefully, it could become not just a better place to put in a kayak on a race that happens once a year, but a place that the public can use with more trees and to make it beautiful and appealing and have it be a park. Maybe, you know, maybe that's the future for that site. I, I'm not sure, I know how things happen in towns and if you've got a project and you're moving forward on it, for example, if we're moving forward on getting you and Marlo a, a good building for that site and that gets agreed upon, it would be great to be able to disassemble that shed that's down there, do something with it, move it, maybe not move it, cause you're saying that that would be really expensive to do, but move all the construction equipment and the mowers and everything else and get them up there so that that can really be a park.
Well, you need a roof over your stuff and this, you, you...
Yeah, 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 I, I know all that. But I mean, in talking about how this all is gonna happen, I think we need to have maybe a short-term goal and a long-term vision-type goal and not, and, and, you know, be a little bit concerned about the fact that if the short-term goal is accomplished, we dedicate ourselves to the long-term goal, which is complete mitigation of the site, making it clean, healthy, getting rid of all the sand and the salt, which I think is gonna be quite an issue to actually get rid of that stuff, cause it's been there, how many decades, you know?
Since what, nineteen eighty?
Really? So forty years. Really? So forty years, forty some odd years.
Yeah, Bob Lake built that, was it seventy five, eighty?
That would be nice as a park or something when everything is done, not tomorrow, but.
You know, I I agree, I agree on having a park, but we got a beautiful park right down, right behind the school already. So I just, I just, I mean, maybe we just put a for sale sign on that and get some tax, get get rid of it and.
I I don't know, I think so much land is leaving the town, I mean, water land.
It's another day.
For water without water on it.
Well, it it's also a, it's a piece that is somewhat unique in that it is both contiguous to our park and contiguous to the school.
Yes.
So it's valuable to both as far as being of use, and especially if it becomes more natural again uh once we're done with everything. Uh so that's kind of why I see things as like the two separate pieces. Because as you you were very adept at, you've got the the shorter term, which is the, let's get a new building that we can start using. And then the longer term is the, and then how do we fix what's there to what we eventually want to be there? And I know that Russ was uh looking through the central planning uh so that we didn't have to contact D E S directly, uh so that we could get some questions answered to help us, to help guide us along those lines. Um I don't think you've gotten anything back yet.
They called me back, they said that we get back.
There might be some grants out there to help us.
Yes, exactly, yes.
That's why I'm asking.
And and so once, once we start down this, and it, that's one of the reasons why it's gonna be very important to have, for example, the committees and actual plans instead of, we think we might like to do this. Um and the more that we have that we can present, then we can present it to the town, even if it's our straw poll that I've done for several years now after town meeting, like which way do you wanna go as a town? And then we can try to finalize a plan that goes that direction.
So what is the select board time, time period that you're you're thinking? How much time from now till, say, for example, selecting um the kind of building? Would that happen in the next year?
Whoa.
You mean the building, the uh shed, you mean?
Yes, yeah, up there.
My my personal goal and expectation earlier was that by the time we hit budgeting this year, we would be able to present a couple options of the buildings to C I P so that they could help say, these are the options, it would cost this much if we do this many number of years or this number of years, and they could make a recommendation and we can bring that to the town.
Great.
Um I can't guarantee that that's gonna happen, but that that's that's my vision and hope that that we'll get there so that we have an actual plan and the town can sign off on, yeah, that's the right amount of money per year so that and X number of years, we'll be able to start using that.
So I think this, you know, this discussion is important. I don't, I don't know about taking up time during a select board meeting, but I think it would be really useful to me anyway um to talk with you all about, you know, the stages of this, because this is a big deal. And it's gonna be expensive, and it needs to get done. And it's been sitting there as a liability for a long, long time. So, you know, if if the, you know, if that's the first step, I think it's an obvious first step. And C I P says, you know, one, one of the, one of the things you've come up with is good, let's try to go with that. Then the next step would be what, Marlo?
Well, you mean, well, do we need to figure out what it's even gonna cost to?
Well, I would have assumed that you would.
She's saying after that, after after that's brought to C I P and C I P says, we like this option. Then basically we bring it to the town and say.
That's right, yeah.
It's this much, we can put, we we were expecting that it'll, it makes sense for X number of years. If the town doesn't think so, they can modify the number for how much goes into what the particular fund.
And then and then in terms of the salt shed fund, um how much is in that at this point?
I don't have any of that figured out.
No, if you'd be with me one moment.
I think the last time I asked, I'm I'm gonna guess, but I could be wrong, thought you said like a hundred and fifty.
Well, of course, I probably didn't bring it up with me, but I can.
That's what I, that's what I remember.
I think I think you're right.
I'm pretty sure it's a bit over a hundred, like maybe twenty five, hundred fifty, somewhere back.
And and you're still putting money in every year during.
We have been, it hasn't been a lot that's been going in each year because we were waiting to see what was supposed to happen. Uh and we had enough to basically get our path up there before we made those decisions.
Yeah, yeah.
And let C I P make their recommendations.
Okay. So I guess, I mean, this this is just, so if Marlo and Emmett are gonna work on finding, you know, a decent structure, which, right, that's what you're gonna work on, then at the same time, I can look into uh mitigation strategies and be prepared with something. Um maybe in six months, five or six months. I've never done anything like this myself.
And and I would suggest that it's, it's more important that we start and start making progress than saying we have five or six months to get something. Uh because as everybody's mentioned, we we need something else first before we can start trying to clean it up.
Right.
And so uh it would be important, I think, to bring possible plans to the town. If you have them available by town meeting, uh but they may or may not be getting funding at that point versus until once the building is funded and built. Uh or so it's one of those, like if, once the town hears about it, gets the way like this out of, say, there's two or three different ideas that you that you guys come up with that is, we think this makes sense. Uh maybe one is turning it into a park, maybe one is, you know, selling it off, maybe one is continuing to store stuff there, et cetera. Once the town kind of weighs in on that, then for the next year, it should be in the C I P budgeting and X number of years out from that point. And maybe the funding towards it doesn't happen until the building is done. Or maybe the funding starts happening concurrently but ramps up once the building is done. Uh that's a discussion for C I P, but until we get to that point, I think it's just important that we start knowing what's there and what could be possible and the directions that make sense to go. And so I think you're the perfect person to start doing that, so.
Well, thanks, it's nice to be perfect at something. A little intimidating. Um so and I'll work with Russ too, because you've been working in the background trying to help us figure this out. I, you know, I just, I want, I want us to sort of dedicate ourselves, a chunk of ourselves, to getting this thing done. And then.
And I know this is, even back when you were sitting up here in one of these chairs, this was one of your pat, like the projects that you cared about, so I wanna make sure that you can continue doing that.
Yeah, great. Now, do you, do you expect me to put a committee together to do the work that I'm gonna be working on? Do you want, do you want that? Is that what you're thinking? Because if you guys have a committee for the shed, is there supposed to be a committee on our side?
Right, right now, so I gave you my like two cents to start with, that I thought it kind of made sense to have committees towards each one. But if we don't need a committee, if it's a bunch of consultations and, you know, these are the three or four things, we think these two make sense, like that makes perfect sense as well. And so I'm not gonna say that there has to be a committee, but at the same time, I'm completely fine with a committee. And you can definitely dedicate one if you think that there are additional people that would have voices, knowledge, or experience that would be helpful in that.
Yeah, I mean, I can think of a couple of people that might be interested enough in the project and have knowledge that I don't have, that would be helpful in terms of you and Marlo. Mark, you know, Marlo's from a construction, you have a construction business savvy, right? And I would think that between the two of them, I I don't know, I mean, it's up to them.
Oh, sorry, I was talking about about your your portion of that.
Yeah, I know, okay.
In whichever way, so um right now, for like working with Russ, trying to find things out and figure out directions, I don't, I don't think there needs to be a a committee for that. But once you get to a point where you think maybe more is worthwhile, then you can just discuss with the rest, and that can be brought to us pretty easy.
And I think maybe somebody from the Conservation Commission would be interested in this project as well. So that would be, that would be really helpful. So um, okay, so do I, are Emmett and I supposed to keep in touch with one another? Do you have my phone?
I think it's in the desk, it's probably still in my phone.
Okay, I have yours.
I have it, I'm pretty sure it's still in my desk at the firehouse, but my thought was with Marlo and I, and I haven't discussed this with her yet, I probably should just talk to her before I.
Volunteer her.
Yeah, so it it's all gonna work, we'll all work together, we'll get it done, we'll build a nice site up there, we'll get this cleaned up. But it's gonna take a lot of money, and it's not gonna happen overnight.
Right.
And um. It would be good that you could just bewitched it and it was.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
Behind us, but it, but it's not gonna happen.
So I have a question, Emmett. Um the salt, the sand and salt that's down there now, is that gonna be sufficient to get us through this this coming year?
What, the sand and salt that are here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not a, no, one good, one good ice storm, that stuff will be gone.
So you have to keep bringing in more sand and salt, despite the fact this past winter was very mild and.
Well, you started out in the very beginning, it was all rain, and it was all ice, and it was all whatever, and that.
So you had to put a bunch down.
Yeah, yeah, and it doesn't matter if you get one inch of snow or two feet of snow, you use the same amount of.
Sure.
Of material, and we did, we got a lot of rain. So on an average, you know, two to three thousand yards of sand and we didn't really use that much salt, did we Dana? Few loads and.
Okay, so, okay. All right. So can I, um can I bring something really quick to your attention, just really quick?
I guess.
I brought, I brought presents for people. Because we're talking about the river and we're talking about, you know, the elementary school. Here, here's a little piece for you. Here's a little piece for you, because you're the fisher guy. There you go. So I was down there.
Found it all in the river.
I found it in an area about a yard square. And I didn't find it, my granddaughter did. So she had, no, she had those goggles on, and she was just floating on her belly looking at stuff. She said, oh, Grammy, here's some glass, Grammy, here's another piece of, wow, here's a fishing hook. So I'm thinking liability of the town down there. I'm wondering, um just a suggestion, uh a a sign, a really prominent sign down there by the picnic tables or whatever that says, swim at your own risk. Um suggested, you know, water, water shoes or whatever those things are called, just to keep little kids' feet.
Yeah, I know some of the portions of the uh river, even by my place, uh stuff like this and and the glass, some of the glass that comes up is like many, many decades old.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not even necessarily current folks doing it, but yeah, it's it's definitely there. We should think about what what can be done and then bring something to the the board to sign off on. Maybe Brenda would have some ideas for that too, as the parks person.
You know, we we in town think of the Blackwater River as a Class A river, we're so proud of it, the waters, the water's clean.
Yeah, right.
Well, it is.
No, no, I don't, I remember going to the class when we got into Class A. I went to that meeting many years ago, and I'm glad we did it. And then there's somebody from some other town, say, what do you need at Class A? Because if you have yours Class A, everybody wants a Class A river. I said, boy, that's a good idea, you know, I mean, come on, we all should have Class A rivers, but.
So people step into the river thinking they're safe. And, you know, when when Amala brought that stuff out of the river, I thought, hmm, liability, so just a suggestion.
Why don't they take it home, I know, we're picking up trash all the time, everybody is in this town, so.
Hopefully, everybody that uses it now is much better than the people that used to use it.
Yes, yes.
But yes, some some decent signage would not be a horrible idea, I don't think. Both, please make sure you take your stuff and be careful. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Do you want me to take the glass and the fish hook back?
I mean, if you want it, you can have it.
I don't want it.
Otherwise, we don't even have it.
We don't even know how to get it, thanks.
Okay, thank you, I'm excited that this project is gonna move forward.
Thank you.
I need to call you about something too, some night.
Call me. All right, take care.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon, Emmett.
Okay, thank you.
Bye bye.
He's he's two department heads, so come on up.
Hey, this seat's soft. What happened to them nice, what happened to them nice chairs?
Those are the library's chairs, so.
The soft ones.
When when you see those out, that's like when they were getting ready or left them out after the Friday films.
No, no, they used to be in all the meetings back.
So they're the library's chairs.
Okay, okay, it's all good.
The goal is not to make it too comfortable so that. You don't want them staying all night.
No, but.
Can you imagine that could just happen?
I got, oh, yes.
I mean, we we did used to have some meetings that would run into the next.
Oh, yeah, which one, did you know something? They didn't amount to nothing.
Very often, very often, we did not get as much done as would be practical in that amount of time.
I'm sorry, but.
Who would like to go first?
Um, the 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 cop's gotta go first because he's in a mad dash. So, financial report. As of the twentieth of the month, last month, we still have hundred, we've used a hundred and eighty three thousand one seventy seven thirty two out of our twenty twenty two, twenty twenty four budget. Still at fifty five point six four percent remaining, so we've got plenty of money left. We had twenty six motor vehicle stops, only two hundred and forty eight dollars in summonses, which is a small summonses. Forty one calls that we handled. Um it was a relatively quiet month, which is nice, and I think.
What was that?
The weather had.
Quiet month.
Oh, quiet month, thank you. You gotta say that louder.
It was so quiet, she didn't even hear it.
And it was the typical calls, civil domestic violence petitions, um mental health issues. Those are always at the top of the board, motor vehicle accidents, road hazards, suspicious activity, which turned out to be nothing, thank God. Sex offender registers, um assisted fire department and EMS.
Thank you.
Um assist other agencies, missing person that we found, which was good. Uh assisting citizens, we had a number of those, animal complaints. No dogs, which was nice, it was all horses, horses, cows.
What else, the roads?
They just out and about?
Oh, they just wander about.
They saw the green grass on the other side, didn't they?
That's right.
We spent two hours chasing horses this afternoon, yeah. We did, we got. That isn't all you got. And we took the owner too, so that's okay, that worked out good. Um, anyway.
That was lovely.
On the other night.
That's another story.
Where a whole bunch of people were responding up near our border. Towards the north.
Pursuit with a bad motor vehicle accident. That's what that was, started in Manchester. And it came up around, went all the way over, almost into Keene and then came back across through Hawketon and up, came through and. They finally got stop sticks out and we got it, so.
Holy moly, that guy was a, a girl was on a good roll.
It was a guy. And looked like a drink.
And he thought he was gonna outrun him, from Keene to Keene, back to Keene.
It don't work, it don't work.
He was very keen on trying to make an excuse.
Typical animal complaints, stalking complaint, which turned out to be not in our town, which was nice. Breach of bail, which we made an arrest on, OHIV complaints, which. We got four OHIV complaints in two days and. Contact a fishing game and they come out with their OHIVs and caught them and wrote all kinds of tickets for them, which was really nice.
And then we don't have to do anything with them, we don't have to go to court or anything.
No, they handle everything, that's what's nice, it's nice, cause we don't have an OHIV, we can't chase them.
Yeah, right, exactly.
We give them the information and they will be right on it, usually there's two or three of them right there within the next day or so.
Wow.
And they'll patrol for a few days and see if they can catch them. So they've been really helpful, really good, we're gonna give them credit for what they do.
Well, that's great.
So, we're good, the only thing I really have is a request for a radio. The radio we're replacing is fifteen years old and it's time for a new one. The problem is they are not cheap, seven thousand dollars for the radio. But we got it from the police cruiser revolving fund, so we have the money in there, we've got. I think around twenty thousand dollars in it right now.
And it's a radio for the car?
Radio for the cruiser.
Well, that's nice, we have the money for it.
Yeah, we're replacing the oldest one that's, I think it's seventeen or eighteen years old right now.
Wow. I'm sure stuff has changed so much with that, it's, I mean, it's like any phones.
The problem is you can't get parts for it if it breaks, so then we're, I mean, right now it's working, but if it breaks, we're in trouble because we won't have it.
Must have been one of them grant radios that we replaced, yeah.
Long time ago.
Yeah, you can't get anything, just use parts for them now. That's what I have in my truck, my radio's getting mad.
And we lucked out, cause usually it's eight to nine months to get a radio, that's how far behind they are.
Wow. But we got one right away?
We got hooked up with one of the reps from the motor vehicle.
Oh, nice.
And we told them what dire straits we were and we used immediately and he pulled some strings and we should have it in about five weeks. Which, unhappy.
All right, do you need that, that way or?
I need it, he needs it, yeah.
You need it.
Yeah, we'll expedite that chief, it should be ready in six to eight months.
Just about the time we get a radio.
I'll send it up to you tomorrow.
And that's what I got for you tonight.
So I see in here that you were continuing in progress towards full-time officer. I believe last time you mentioned that there was about to be a part-time officer, did that get you to realize?
Yeah, um, he's still, he, he been, I think he was in my office the other day. He's working right now for the federal government, so he is in the process of retiring for them and. He's working Homeland Security, so hopefully he's, get that all squared away and he'll come to work for us.
Awesome.
So that'll be nice. And he's super experienced, he used to be the chief of Bo, retired from state police, so he's got. Great asset to us.
Needs no training.
Nope. No, he's, matter of fact, that's what he does, he does training.
Oh, wow.
That's what he does for most of Homeland Security, is training.
That's great, though.
That's good.
Awesome. Thank you very much, anything else coming aboard for you?
No.
All right.
Were you gonna talk about the sign?
Uh, yes. Do, do we want anything now, or do we wanna finish the department heads?
Well, I was thinking before the chief left, that's what I was thinking.
It was, so we should probably sit down and figure out. What we should do for some sort of a policy for the sign, on how it works and how it's regulated.
Be a, be a policy for the safety building?
Absolutely. We're just still learning how to run it and we've learned how to put certain things on it, like the selectments meeting for tonight and. A lot of the other stuff was preloaded in it, so all we get is hit a button and it automatically goes on, but.
Oh, that's neat.
We can, we'll look, learn how to do it, it's a learn and progress. But it's not bad, but we can, any meetings we can put on.
I have a request for something to go on the sign, but I'll talk to you about that.
Okay.
Um, tomorrow.
I'll swing in tomorrow.
We'll have to go over it and see how much we're gonna charge them.
Well, that was my big concern, is when I post a meeting, who am I sending it to, to say that we need to put this up on the sign?
Zip it to both Phil and I.
Okay.
Cause we can both add it on.
Yeah, that's all I'm worried about is when it goes on.
Zip it to us and, you know, just give us plenty of time so we can put it on there and let it run for a while.
Usually I post a meeting, planning boards the week before, the select boards usually the Thursday before the meeting. So that should be enough time.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's nice, that way, there's no question, the meeting's estate, it scrolls, I don't, and let it scroll for a few days.
Now, is there, maybe I'm hoping for too much, but is there a way to, for example, point it to our news on the website? Because basically, anything that's on our front page.
You could just say for more details, go to Webster hyphen.
And anything that's important enough to put on the sign should probably show up on our front page of our, our website.
Yeah, well, we, we can put right on there, you know. To see what other town meetings are coming, go to this website.
Well, no, I was thinking, like, so when we post something up to the website, it puts that same notification out? As like the headline of it, like meeting on blah, blah, blah date.
You might have to go figure that out, damn chief executive.
Have to figure out how that would work.
And I think that would be just me emailing it to Steve and Phil as soon as I post it.
I think that's why the policies expand, you know, very important, who, you know, what the priority is and, and.
And also.
Cause even if it doesn't work that way, we should probably try to match the two up, cause if it's worth you putting it on the sign. It's worth us putting it on our website too.
Any, any meetings that the town has, whether it's planning board, budget hearings or anything, there's no reason why that shouldn't be gone on the sign anyway.
Right, that's why I just wanna know who I'm shooting it out to, so I can let Phil know.
Yeah, zip it to both of us and we'll make it happen.
And then I wanted to know, are we gonna be able to take it when somebody wants to put a notice up, if they come into the town office? Do they, are we gonna have set fees and then we could say this is.
The only thing we, and that's something you guys gotta look at, you know, I, my suggestion was, hey, if you're gonna, somebody wants to put their grandson's birthday up there. Charge them twenty-five bucks, that's cheap birthday present for them and let it scroll for a full day.
Cause that's the other question, if we're doing that at the town office.
A lot of the times, if you guys are off doing the.
But we could, as long as they notify us, you think of us a week notice in advance, we can program it right in and have it scroll.
Cause you can probably program that, a, a week in advance and hit a button, so on such or such a date, it starts.
It starts.
Starts, okay.
And we've learned how to shut it off. We just gotta figure out how to set it up in advance, so right now, like the meeting, it should go off, I think at midnight, it should, that should delete itself. We hope. We'll find out tomorrow morning.
Let's hope the meeting's done by then.
We will be.
That's the sort of thing where like, there could be a small charge to do that, but it could also be less of a charge if they're renting out the hall to, to do something.
Absolutely.
They want to put on the sign.
Yeah, we'll see, tack it into the rent for the hall and we'll put it on the board.
So.
And then we gotta figure out exemptions too, is the, can the church post their sopers on there with, how to fee and, you know.
I would think the church would be able to do it without a fee.
Yeah, I do too, as much as the church does.
We're all trying to go the right place, all right? Don't be pushing it over there.
No, 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 but I, 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 yeah, no, I support the church.
I don't want no flames on it. Keep the clouds out.
No fire and brimstone.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So how, how do we move forward with that, are we gonna talk to them about a policy?
Why don't I talk with the police chief about it and we'll see if we can get something framed for you to look at.
I think that'd be a good time to have a meeting right up at our place, like Wednesday.
We're gonna have a department head meeting here soon.
Like Wednesday be a good day, cause that's when Brothers is open?
Wednesday would be a wonderful day.
Yeah.
Brothers don't.
Well, cause we're open, we're open, that's the.
They're not open Monday and Tuesday.
Really?
We're open that day, so that may not.
Wednesday will.
No, so have, I mean, next Wednesday, whatever, I mean, within the next few weeks, we'll.
No, I mean, we're open every Wednesday. So I mean, for us to close it, unless the select board doesn't mind if we shut the office down.
Well, don't have to close, you can just put, call a police station if you need to talk to you.
I think that's a good sign to put all the time. We'll figure it out.
Just put, just put on your thing, I can't come to the phone right now, I'm tied up.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Tied up at the police station.
That's what I do, that's what's on mine, can't get to the phone.
Chief Adams is gonna be tied up at the police station. They could go on the sign.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just can't turn it into a full-time job, you guys got enough to do.
We'll figure it out.
We could hire a sign person.
Yeah, good luck with that.
How about a committee?
Yeah.
No, Merrick County's got a number of signs, I'll get a hold of them and see what they have, if they have some kind of.
Well, they must have some sort of policy.
They'd give us a, a good start to see where we can go.
Good thinking.
Good idea.
Yeah. Why wouldn't you?
That's why I call him chief.
But a meeting, I mean, I can come to a meeting whenever you want, so.
Yeah, cause Russell can watch the town hall.
Russell does a very good job watching the town hall.
What exactly do you watch, the door though, downstairs?
The nearest exit.
Oh, gosh, is that?
Hey, mostly for the past two weeks, it's been taking tax bills. Nobody comes in to see me, it's just dropping off tax bills.
Hey, that's okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, dude.
That's good. All right. So, um, we do the firehouse, we're at a hundred and thirty-nine calls today. Just the everyday medical calls and we did go to Boswen the other morning to help them folks with the sawmill fire. And we haven't been out of town other than that, but. Yeah, last Wednesday, we had a business meeting, the Wednesday night before that, they did boat training over to Winter Pocket and had a good training and. Um, the air compressor. At the firehouse that came down from the old firehouse, and I don't know how old it was, I thought it was new when they. Built the new firehouse, but I was told different, that it was a hundred years old before it got down there, so. Phil's gonna take a look at it, the size of it, and the gallons and price one out to, to, um, see that. See what that's gonna cost to get that replaced. The twenty-third of this month, the folks from MSA will be out to do the yearly certi- certification on the, um, packs. For the, in the, in the mask, so that will be done.
Sorry to interrupt, but. A, a while back, you, you mentioned the pump for dealing with those and taking the oxygen and setting up those tanks. Had been running all night at one point and whatever happened with that was, did something need to get replaced or was it just?
Somebody left the. The, um, we always shut that off when we're done. And it didn't get shut off that night, I do have them folks, they'll be out to, and now it's shut off when it's not being used. But they're supposed to be coming out as well. It must be a.
So we don't quite know yet?
No, and we've turned it on and off a hundred times and we've left it on when we were there and it, it's just something went funky, so, um, a regulator or. Or something, so I don't know, but that will be, um, cause they have to come out and change the oil, cause they heat it up and, um. And go through all that, but it's not the same people that.
Oh, okay.
That do the, the packs. I did talk to the fire truck salesman there a bit ago and he says that the fire truck was getting there. So, he didn't have a whole lot to share, but he said they are working on it and it will be sooner than later. So that's about all I got. And you can't say anything or do anything or tell them to hurry up, because it's, they could sell it to ten other people for another two hundred thousand dollars. And the best part of it is, we haven't sent, we haven't gave them a penny yet, so our money's been in the bank making interest, right?
I am looking forward to it to be the first thing to go across the new bridge.
Is he dreaming?
It's gonna be here before that.
Okay, all right, I'm just teasing you.
Yeah.
That was good, though.
I thought it was pretty good.
He left me a message, I called, I called the salesman a, a couple of days before Christmas, just to say hi and to visit with him, because. Keep on.
Well, I think every community's in the same position, waiting for new equipment.
Yeah, it's three, it's two to three years now if you order an ambulance, before you even see it. And, um, that's what's holding us up with the deal that's going on in Hoptekin, but. So Chris told me, when I talked to him in December, that he was not really. Up to delivering our truck in the salty weather. So, I was speaking March, April, that's what it looked like then. So when I left him a text the other day, I says, well, I guess we might get it in the snowy and nasty weather, I said, because winter's coming. So. Yeah, no, we, I might have told you last month, but I have a young man that's full-time on another department. And, um, we're waiting for his background check, I haven't got anything from Phil yet, so it hasn't.
We sent it to the state.
Yeah, I know you did.
Waiting for them.
So, um, that's, that's gonna be good. But other than that, the firehouse, the camera on the front door had failed. And we finally got them people, cause they've been so busy, no help and stuff, they finally came out a couple of weeks ago. Replaced the camera and reset everything and so that's all back up and working.
Is that ESP?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
So I think other than, I think that's about it, but. Firehouse, unless anybody has anything else? So, I spent eighty thousand dollars on Friday. Allstate asphalt came to town and did a chip sealing.
Is that all done?
The chip sealing part is, they'll be out in the morning with the sweeper truck to.
Okay.
To get.
I just wanted to know if I could take down the notification.
Yeah, well, they'll be out tomorrow to sweep up the extra rock that's on top, I gotta meet the guy at the sand shed at seven.
That's quicker than I thought.
That was faster.
With the sweeper, then loads it into the dump truck and then I haul it off. We completed the pipe.
Well, that's nice, I'm su- excuse me, they load it in the dumpster and you haul it out, so we can use this chips and stuff again for something else, right?
Uh, yeah, well, the ones that were left over last year, I mixed them in with the sand at the sand shed, because they're just a little chip rock. And then I don't know, we're gonna be working in Pillsbury Lake, so I'll probably just haul them back and then mix it into a crush.
But that's good, cause you're saving the town money, appreciate that. You guys do a good job.
They all don't come off, that, just the loose ones on top.
But still, it's still saving the town money, I appreciate that.
So, um, we completed the ditching from Monty Bendis to the. So, um, we completed the ditching from Marty Bendis to the end of Little Hill on both sides, uh, we replaced all the pipes, and now we just gotta let it pack in for a bit, and then we'll tie them back in, and, um, um, Warren's coming out from GMI to give me a price, 'cause I wanna put some numbers together for Little Hill, and then today, we replaced the last two, oh, it's three, we replaced two, and then Wednesday, we'll do the third one in front of Johnny Greenlaw's old place at seven-ten White Plains Road, there's two pipes coming across and then one up. So, all the pipes will be completed on that road up to date, and I'm gonna get a price so at the, where the snowmobile trail crosses, where Derby's used to own, at the end of, um, Mike Burick's field, if you come around the corner, at our new culvert pipe. And then the field ends, you'll see where the tire, it was, if we overlaid it, and it's been chip sealed, and then from there to the Warner Town Line, it needs to be overlaid, so I'm gonna get a price on that um, to see, because we have some more use that road preservation money for one of them, or Dia Meadow, there's a section on Dia Meadow Road that, um, I'm gonna get a price on as well. And then last week, I went around, and the road, the roads really weren't horrible, horrible, potholed out, but they were just washboardy enough, so instead of spending four or five days out there grading, it was just in places it didn't really need it, and in other places it did, so I tuned them up there a couple of days last week. Calcium tank, I'm waiting for them to get that filled up, so we can get some more of that out. And I think that's about all we've been doing with the roads. Did a toss wheel.
Was it Friday?
Friday on Pleasant Street, where that kept washing out from the project we did last year, I wasn't quite sure how it was all gonna work, so I toss wheeled a eighteen-ton. Shoulders were sore, thank God for Russell and Emery. So, other than that, what have I done? Nothing?
You never stop, that's the problem.
All right.
While you're here, Emmett, and I'm gonna ask the board, we've had a concern brought to our attention about a supposed driveway, so I was gonna ask the board if we could send, um, who's up? Tom out to look at, has he been out? No.
No.
Uh, you had spoken to this resident, and I'll talk to you about that later, about the neighbor put in a driveway? Or they've told, they've told this person it wasn't a driveway, but?
Well, the folks have moved out of town.
Oh, they have?
Yeah.
They put it in, you mean?
Yeah.
It's somewhere new now?
The place is for sale.
Yeah, okay.
And they moved out, so, at, at one-oh-three New Hampshire Drive, come down around the bend and there, Mrs., Miss Murphy's lived there for a long, ever since I've been around, and then the house next to her, the water used to go down right, pretty much on the property line and over there, and then they put an illegal driveway in, and I talked to Russell, I think Russell called them, and then I went down and visited with the gentleman, and then he came back and told Russell that it's not a driveway, I love playing basketball, and I'm getting a hoop, which, okay, so he tied a piece of his land to play basketball, they didn't tire all the way out to the Todd Road, they did leave a section there, it is property line to the roads, not tarred. But it's, the, the water just lays right there, it's a mess, all went along, and the only way it can leach now is that she's got it all vermed up, so it really can't, but into her settlement system, and she's concerned about that. It's not the first time that she's at, talked to me about it, but that, um, the water can't go, because they built that, it's a driveway, because he parked his camper in it, and they parked their cars in it, but nothing was ever.
Too bad Pillsbury Lake got rid of their HOA portion, 'cause that's who should have been taking care of that. But, uh, so what is?
So, what was that, three years ago?
I was like, two?
Maybe, two.
So, so what is for us to do?
Well, that, my, is it or isn't it a driveway, I guess is the question.
That's the question.
That is the question. I guess if we have to send Tom, could we send Tom, if it gets to that, I'm not sure whether, whether this is gonna warrant it, now that I know a little more, sounds like the problem's the water drainage.
Well, it is, it.
Well, there is a separate part of the driveway regulations that if it's not technically the, the drainage is part of the driveway regulations.
Well, the drainage was always there, it was a B, the water went that way, and they filled in.
That would be a violation of the driveway regulations, and they would have to fix the drainage.
Okay.
So, we've been.
Why don't you and I talk about that, now that I know a little more, and I just wanted, I knew you'd talk to him.
'Cause then they would have to fix the drainage portion of it.
Right, and, and now they have two, two driveways.
So, it, so it sounds like what you need from us as a board is, if it's warranted, to be able to contact Tom.
That is exactly what I was trying to say, in so many words.
Seems reasonable, 'cause we can send Tom up.
And then Tom can meet with Mrs. Mur, Miss Murphy, give her, talk with her, she, did she write you a letter?
She did.
Okay.
Yes, I, I got it this afternoon.
She said, she asked me what she could do.
Yeah.
Very nice lady.
She seemed very pleasant, and I wanted to see what I could do to help.
And I said, you know, come talk to the, talk to the board.
And, and I asked you, because she had mentioned she had talked to you about it.
Yes, and I, I told her, I said, you, you need to talk to the board, it'd be better if you were here with me, explained your issue, and she said that she had another commitment tonight, that she'd already, and I says, "Well, stop in and, um, talk to Dana," I get his email, she asked me if I knew your email, and I was in the truck, and I said, "Why don't you just stop in," she was coming back through, "Go in, see how he wants to do it," and, uh,
She just sent me the email from the website, so.
So, and.
Well, we have a process for code stuff, so.
Well, thank you, and then I just wanted to know what the.
Yeah.
A little bit of the background.
Anything else for department heads or related that you wanna bring up for them?
Uh, no, I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Good.
I'm getting some very strange looks from the last of the select board.
Well, thank you very much.
Your boy Walter, do you need anything from us?
Don't call. Right.
They were always on. I know yours is, I tell you all the time.
I tried calling you the other night.
All right.
I needed to get bailed out of jail.
I can't.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so thank you very much, and that moves us to our whole business, which is the furnace replacement.
I, uh, I understand that one of the vendors that we had contacted is not able to give us a quote.
If you're talking about what I think you are, I'll go ahead and, uh, explain that, uh, so, one of the vendors was Revision, uh, and they, we had asked them to come out and give us a quote, and they did for the individual heat pumps, uh, but they were the ones that had said, uh, "We think we'll have something better for you, uh, in the near future to offer, but we can't really talk about it, 'cause we haven't finalized it yet." Um, I had, uh, sent out an email to them, uh, asking if they had any updates, and it was, "Uh, I'm afraid I don't have information on when we'll be able to design those systems." Uh, "If we get it, we'll let you know, and we understand if that may put us out of the running." Um, so they were.
Oh, well, that's.
Prompt and professional about it, but, um.
It must be way too busy.
But that was, uh, they, they're, they're not yet offering the new technology that they hoped they might be offering, which sounds like it was ducted heat pump systems, uh, which is what one of the other quotes, uh, was for, a combination of that and propane, but everything else, like, nothing has changed in this since the last time we looked at it and discussed it. The, we had asked the Energy Committee to go look at this, uh, and really nothing changed there, other than the addition of pellets was brought up, um, a couple different options were looked at, and the Energy Committee at the time had really wanted to wait for the additional quote, uh, from Revision, but of course, that's not coming at this point, and we need to move forward. I don't have the quotes in front of me, did you wanna cover anything? Did I miss something?
No, I appreciate, thank you, that's exactly what I meant. So, that leaves, we had two other quotes. Has the Energy Committee, and I, and I guess I don't really need answers now, I'm not looking for that, but I'm just trying to remind us all that soon it will be December, and, and I'll be going, "Oh, we don't have a heating system." So, that's kinda where I am, and I don't know if the, the Energy Committee's had a chance to think about this again and, and scale down which, which proposal they thought was the better of the two.
I, I, I think we had a general consensus of the combined system was probably the best of what had been offered. Uh, but, um, not being the chair over there, you should probably reach out to Marty and ask him if he wants to have the Energy Committee get together and make a formal recommendation, or not, now that you know there won't be.
All right.
Someplace for their.
Thank you, that's what we were looking for.
Are those furnaces we have, they're, uh, gas or oil?
They're propane, gas.
They're propane, okay, okay, and they're basically new furnaces, right? Basically with?
Well, they were twenty-thirteen, I believe.
Oh, well, that's not exactly new, so.
They're, they're old enough to not be in warranty and be starting to be hard to service.
I will say Huckleberry did try to do what they could with warranties on those.
Didn't we ever get a quote from them on replacing?
We did not, we did not, I was surprised about.
Yeah, that's kinda weird.
'Cause we had.
We had asked them to give us a quote for replacing with two systems and changing the ducting, but.
Yeah.
I guess they didn't do ducting or something.
Well, I don't know, um, and I believe that they were the ones that installed these, this system, and, um, it's an unusual system, and I'm not quite sure why it was done the way it was, but being that I'm not a heating expert.
All right. Uh, so I guess that brings us to new business.
Um, I don't really have any, well, I guess maybe I will talk to you a little bit about new business. Part, in your policy on accounting, the town policy on accounting, I'm trying to straighten out a few, uh, loose ends, and there's a policy in the return check procedure that I'd like to update. Um, the policy says the return check charges will be assigned to a separate revenue account, that has never happened. Um, it just goes into the general other revenue when there's a return check, there's a fee of twenty-five dollars if a check is returned, and I don't see a reason that you would have a separate revenue account for that, um, so I'd like to make an adjustment in the policy and have you bless it when I'm done, and it's a very small.
And that sounds reasonable.
Very small, um, thing, so it's, it's kinda nice to have some time.
Good reason at the time.
Well, maybe it was, I don't know, but.
That's why there's all these rules in life.
Right, right.
Or they just adopted a policy from another town and squished all the names around.
I'm sure that could.
They'd never have.
Anyway, that was, that was really, the other thing that maybe is new is, and I could put a memo to you, about the tractor at the transfer station, um, bought the farm, and they had to buy a new one. Our share is forty-five hundred dollars.
And we don't have a say anyways.
Not really.
Right, yeah, that's about the bottom line.
But I appreciated getting a call.
Right. And we have the money in our account.
Um, well, yes.
Okay, that's good.
But as my father would have said, "We won't when we spend it."
Yeah, that's true.
We, we had expected that, uh, so we should have, we should have that amount extra sitting in the fund for the transfer station, but the extra was to be towards additional payments for offsetting the PFAS stuff, so.
I mean, you always could.
It's there, but we'll have to get it back.
I mean, I could bring to you, I mean, there is still some unassigned money from the, uh, ARPA money.
Huh.
So, and that might be just enough to cover that.
Okay.
So, I could give you some other options if you'd like.
Well, we have to spend all that ARPA money by the end of this year.
End of the year, yeah, so.
That would make sense.
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
Also, uh, we should make sure that anything that may be applicable from impact fees.
I think that's a good point.
Is, is used in this manner as well.
Well, I, we killed the transfer station impact fees this, last year. We bought the compactor, part of that, with that, um, but there is, there is a little bit, we've had a few new impact fees.
So, we should make sure that anything we can comes out of the first.
But we certainly, I hear your point, yes.
Okay. And I assume it's coming, uh, into the signing portion for the ordinance, and, and that's why it wasn't in old business?
You have assumed correctly.
Okay.
I, I cannot fool you. So, there's the ordinance that I need signatures on, and Neil said he forgot to have his board sign it last week, so I said, "I would have you sign yours this week."
I'll have them sign it first. Yeah, 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 no, yeah, they can go first.
I told you.
Why, you heard me, I said that.
I will bring it over to him, um, so that he can have his board sign it.
Well, we should, there's a certain somebody that did a lot of work. You know, you'd say, "Sign, if you don't sign it, what, do you know where you're gonna end up?"
Here you go.
I'm afraid of you.
The, uh, so do we have any other new business or correspondence, or?
Um, I had just given you just a, uh, from empty trash, the.
Yep.
The thing that came to mind, that's, he's okay, thank you.
That's for you. We might be getting a record short meeting.
And.
Don't tell them that.
I know, I changed that.
Don't, don't change that, come up with something like that to this point.
I know, no!
Had, uh, we heard anything back from the Hawthakin Board about when they want to discuss, uh, the, uh, additional stuff, for example, the enforcement.
Really?
Listen, they're making a sign first, for Christ's sake.
We left that they were gonna, you know, get in touch and.
When I deliver this to the L, I will remind him. That's all I had in, in correspondence.
All right.
Holy crap, hold on, go ahead. Public?
They're, they're a little quiet. We must be doing okay.
Yeah, well, that's true. That's right.
So that moves us to meeting minutes and other signings and motions.
Right.
Uh, has everybody had a chance to look at the meeting minutes?
Make a motion except the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four selectmen's meeting minutes?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Do we have anything else to sign or motion or?
We have lots for you to sign and we have a motion. Uh, it's the end of, the second quarter ended yesterday, so this is a motion for the trustees of trust funds.
I hate those motions. Not as bad as they used to be.
And those are attached bills with it.
Well, I'll select you.
Let's see, PHB, Cemetery.
That's because they just showed up.
The Highway Building and Land, yep. Office equipment for the copier. Municipal property maintenance for the tree. Uh, road preservation stuff. I will point out that you have, uh, it's not gonna matter for the way that I'm gonna, uh, state the motion, but you do have, uh, both names listed for, um, the highway and road preservation stuff. One is one, one is the other.
Um, I'm not sure if I understood what you were saying.
Uh, you have fleece and flower as well as BRD.
Oh, okay, yes, I do. I, I guess I shouldn't jump the gun and type these as I go.
Yeah, okay.
You do a good job. You guys do good.
I would move to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of ninety-one thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-eight cents payable to the town of Webster to reimburse the town for expenses to be withdrawn from capital reserve funds and expendable trust funds as listed.
Second.
To withdraw forty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-seven cents from Bridge Improvement Capital Reserve Fund, to withdraw six thousand eight hundred from the Cemetery Improvement Capital Reserve Fund, to withdraw seven thousand one hundred forty-five from the Highway Building and Land Capital Reserve Fund, to withdraw four thousand six hundred seventy dollars from the Office Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, to withdraw nine thousand five hundred from the Municipal Property Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund, and to withdraw fifteen thousand three hundred ten dollars and twenty-one cents from the Road Preservation Expendable Trust Fund, again totaling ninety-one thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was good timing.
It's nice that it can just, instead of every week having to do a whole litany of stuff.
Awesome. I think it works out better for me anyway. Um, I have, um, a special, I get another special check for the cemetery monuments that need to be. And that is because I took his bill for seventy-five dollars. Be, if you see the bill, you see why. And it's really seven hundred fifty dollars.
I like the first bill better.
Yeah, I like the first one, yeah, right.
I think you saw it right. I think he was seeing things.
Well, both-
His bills are interesting. Yeah, yeah.
Brenda and I both, yes, very.
Oh.
Brenda and I both thought it was seventy-five and, but we talked about it. I talked with Brenda about it.
We'll even write some bill out for seventy-five anyway.
Well, you know, I, there's so much I learned.
I'm assuming they're gonna pay an election postage just to send it out.
Oh, he'll be in.
Right. No mail needed.
It, it, it will be cashed very shortly.
Where did I see something? Was it in the paper where somebody was cleaning up the cemetery stones? Was it in copper?
Oh, great, oh.
I thought it was, they were doing it as a love, you know, just a kind of a nice thing. Yeah, somewhere, just read that.
Take it on that.
That's amazing. Last, at your last meeting, Russ did a very good job explaining why my bill was so high and it had to do with the welfare that has a welfare reimbursement coming and I forgot to get in the paperwork, so I need to sign that.
My gosh, oh gosh.
He was looking questioningly, do I need to remind? Because I remember why.
There were welfare, um, bills and it was an unusual situation and I decided to help them out since I knew I'd get the money back.
My, my only question, and maybe it was answered then, but I don't remember if so, how or why do we get the money back?
This person owns a property which I've leaned.
Ah, okay, thank you. Yes, you did mention that, okay.
Otherwise, I wouldn't have done that. There's three hundred dollars I spent for postage.
See, you can't send something for seventy-five dollars.
No, no.
That's because we keep sending these seventy-five dollars.
I think you should put my stuff to the bottom of the pile. I see how it is.
Yes, I'm sorry, Russ. Yours is at the bottom?
It's the important part, holding up the rest.
This is the letter that, written to the clerk and the deputy clerk regarding the-
And thank you for writing this and, and drafting it up.
Well, I just really, I thought that was an amazing feat.
I have, yeah, really.
I've never had a show.
In all the towns I've worked with, that's never-
I don't ever think I ever heard that either. I've been here for fifty years.
I mean, they were, they emailed, they called, they emailed.
Can I put a smiley face next to my name?
You know, you can do whatever you want.
I even made it semi-legible.
Whoa, my gosh, this is a shock.
I don't know how to frame that.
Like, that's a thing that just doesn't happen, so I
Yeah, right.
I can do a thing that doesn't happen to
Okay, so Russ, they sign here, they sign-
Oh, my God, look at that name. Professional, man.
It's not just a line.
I remember.
It's nice, very professional.
Remember how I gave you the temper bill last time? I didn't double check or forgot to sign one of them.
Oh.
Maybe you had trouble.
Yeah, one of them's already signed.
You're in trouble.
At least I wasn't the only one that screwed up.
Yeah, no, no, I screwed this up last time because I should have double checked. You already signed the other one and you forgot.
Oh. And so we did the-
Yeah, you did the certificate. You just didn't sign the warrant.
Oh, okay.
I'm already getting in trouble. Don't beat me up.
That's right, yeah, right.
It was a very busy night.
Do we have anything else for us to sign?
No, that was the last thing I need you to sign, but I would like to ask you for non-public tonight under par, say ninety-one eight three
You disappointed my luck.
Two A.
And which one is that?
That personnel.
Okay, is there anything anyone else wants to put into public session? Seeing none, I would move that we enter into non-public session at eight oh eight for Personnel.
I, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And as per usual, we will immediately end the public session once we re- return from non-public session, so there will not-